Katie, do you want to kick it off?
No, you can go right ahead. This is CPTC and it's tonight's webinar.
Okay, alright.
And I just, I just, we got an email, I'm sorry, from Fran, says she's still in the waiting room?
She's in the, she's in the participant list. She was able to get in because we started the webinar.
Okay.
She's an attendee right now.
Oh, she got in? Okay, alright.
Yeah. So is there anybody else from the planning board who is planning to attend?
I think, um, Sinead said she couldn't make it, so I think that solves, right?
I think so.
Hmm.
I don't think Richard was going to be able to join.
Okay, so the folks who are in the panelist, uh, I mean, the attendees list, um, they're all, none of them are board members. Just checking. Okay. Great. Well, I am going to get started then. So, um, I'm Jenny Ray. Um, my day job is Executive Director of the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments. And I am also a frequent presenter and, um, trainer around housing and fair housing, affordable housing topics, as well as a lot of other topical areas and community development and land use planning. And I'm, I'm pleased to say first of all, thank you to the city for inviting, um, this content to be shared with, uh, both the zoning board of appeals last week and then this week with the planning board. Um, thanks specifically to Fran, who is one of the attendees, staff, and, um, really have appreciated this opportunity. And, um, tonight, really, I'm going to be making, uh, I'm going to be sharing with you all about fair housing laws. Uh, we'll follow up, uh, tomorrow with the PowerPoint that I've been, um, sharing. And also a handout that accompanies this presentation so that you have the materials, uh, moving forward. Of course, if I don't, for some reason, if we don't get to your questions or you, we don't have enough of a dialogue this evening about anything that you're thinking about, or you have a question about, you are always welcome to contact me, um, at NIMCOG. Or if you have anything else come up, uh, tonight that you can't, uh, remain on, uh, for whatever reason, uh, you're welcome to go. Again, I'll share the PowerPoint afterwards so you'll have all the material, uh, available to you. So, um, are there any questions? Do you have anything else you need to do before I get started? No? Alright, great. Well, um, and I am going to share my screen. Everybody can see that?
Yes.
Excellent. Alright. So, um, again, as I mentioned, I, um, and thank you also to the Citizen Planner Training Collaborative. If you're not familiar with them, I hope this is your, your intro and entryway into all of the different materials that are available to, uh, people like you who are volunteering their precious time and hours to help make communities better across the Commonwealth. They have all kinds of materials for land use boards on their website. They also have a conference, that's an all-day conference, usually, usually the third Saturday in March. Um, and I would encourage you to attend if you haven't been previously. The content is, um, is available to anybody who's a volunteer, um, across the state. So, um, with that, as I mentioned, I've been asked to talk about fair housing laws and what that means. And so I'm going to walk through a little bit of an introduction to what we're going to cover tonight. Like I said, I might not get to everything, but I'm going to do my very best and we'll see where we get to. Um, and so if you could, just mute yourself, just so we don't have any interruption during, um, my content, that would be great. There are pauses in between, um, so that there will be time for questions. So, first thing is that, uh, the workshop is really designed to cover and address hopefully different questions that you've been having or topics that you've been maybe talking about or on the periphery. First one is really just what, when we're talking about fair housing laws, what exactly are fair housing laws and what is the history of fair housing in the United States? Um, and also what is the duty to affirmatively further for housing? This might not be a, you know, something that rolls, uh, that easily, but it is something I say frequently enough that it, it comes very naturally to me to say it out loud, but hopefully you'll get into the habit of talking about affirmatively furthering for housing as it is the duty of the city of Lowell to engage in such a, in such a thing. So this workshop is designed to address, um, also how the overview in general of fair housing laws, including federal law, Massachusetts law, lo- and local case law and regulations and initiatives. Um, and also how municipality municipalities and local boards can avoid housing discrimination. So with that, I'm going to step into the first section, which is really just the overview of fair housing. And this might be, again, familiar to some of you, but new to others. So, um, again, if you have questions, just write them down. I'm going to have a pause point. There will be time to ask questions there. You can also put a question in the Q and A function on the webinar and I'll get to that again when I pause. So, um, what is fair housing? Fair housing is the right to choose housing free from unlawful discrimination. And together, the Federal Fair Housing Act from 1968 and Massachusetts laws, because Massachusetts laws are actually more stringent than the Federal Fair Housing Act, are designed to protect people from discrimination in housing based on race, color, religion, sex, national origin, familial status, disability, marital status, age, sexual orientation, gender identity, and other factors. So many different bases are covered under the combined federal fair housing laws and Massachusetts laws. And fair housing makes it illegal to have any discrimination in the sale, lease, or rental of housing, or making housing otherwise unavailable because of race, color, religion, sex, handicap, familial status, or national origin. And I think most people, when you think of fair housing, you probably think of that, about the sale or rental of housing, but it is much more comprehensive than that. And that's because there are other categories that inform for housing laws. Those are court decisions that are based on state and federal constitution, statutes and regulations. And all fair housing laws regardless have that same purpose to prevent discrimination in the rental or sale of housing. So, how on earth did we get here? How do we get a country that has laws on the books? Um, and a state that has, uh, even more stringent laws on the books to protect people and to make sure that we have housing choice? Um, it started a long time ago, um, nearly 100 years ago. We had a, um, a time period where there were some pivotal cases issued and decided by the Supreme Court, um, of our country. And some of those cases made for, um, particularly, you know, trends that around that 20th, the turn of the 20th century were really coming to be with a new wave of housing and land use policies that ultimately were introduced across the nation and informed by the idea of dispersing households from crowded cities and to encourage property ownership. Underlying though, many of these laws was a concentrated effort to segregate households by race and ethnicity. And some state and local policies excluded black indigenous people of color from living and owning property in certain communities. Others, um, intentionally segregated neighborhoods by class, by permitting only single-family homes to be built in the most desirable neighborhoods, which effectively priced out most households of color. Um, additionally, private acts of very overt discrimination such as deed restrictions that prevented the resale of individual properties to anyone, any one of the designated priests further cemented residential segregation as the norm in housing markets across the country. And, um, that's particularly true in eastern Massachusetts, but felt really throughout the Commonwealth. Um, and so it's, it's seems like a long time ago, but there are echoes of this today. And it's over decades of time that has sort of kept things in the same pattern. Um, and a lot of that was aided by what's kind of this, the infancy of what we know as redlining. Um, where exclusionary planning and zoning was really aided by the federal government through multiple federal programs. Um, you've seen probably a picture of this map or some, not this specific one necessarily, but the redlining maps, which was a map, um, that were created through the, maps that were created through the homeowners loan corporation. And they were the federal government's answer to how to assess risky versus preferred investments. And they were largely based on race and geography, which is the equivalent of redlining. Um, one of many practices involved in redlining. Um, and local industry groups essentially through the Federal Housing Administration, um, and backed by them raided neighborhoods with large concentrations of black households and other distinct racial ethnic subgroups as being the least stable and outlined them in red. And that gave rise to essentially the term redlining. Um, that was used to really describe the exclusion of most households of color from accessing low-cost mortgage credit and better quality housing. And redlining continued through the post-World War II era with the Federal Housing Administration maps guiding not just mortgage insurance, but also the securitization of loans by Fannie Mae and low interest rate borrowing by veterans under the GI Bill. So it's really pretty comprehensive and, uh, again, informed by a number of other factors, including federal acts like the New Deal, the GI Bill, the Housing Act, and of course, the Federal Highway Act or Urban Renewal, as it's called. Um, so this is over like two decades of time where a pretty significant amount of things are happening. One of those pivotal things actually happened in 1949 with the original Housing Act, where it was really a, a time of, um, you know, uh, the separation of trying to figure out how to really address housing in the, as a federal policy and the national policy around housing. Um, but it really wouldn't be for many decades after that. The Civil Rights Act of 1964 and the Fair Housing Act of 68 that things began to sort of change. And you started to see, um, that in, for example, President Kennedy had an order banning segregation in federally funded housing, um, and construction and, uh, the operation rehabilitation financing and other forms of urban renewal at that time. Um, and, uh, other prohibitions began to take place, but, um, due to really a legacy of patterns, um, in federal programming and acts and funding programs, a lot of this, uh, the pattern of development and segregation was already fairly, fairly, uh, stuck in place, if you will. And so, um, even though the Federal Fair Housing Act was, was passed in 1968, um, there's sort of, uh, more to understand about what exactly is protected under fair housing. So what kinds of discrimination do fair housing laws intend to prevent? So some protections, of course, are very broad. Massachusetts protects against more categories of discrimination than the federal government. As I mentioned, we have a more stringent, um, stringent set of laws here in Massachusetts. Um, and local governments usually work closely with the Commonwealth to prevent discrimination. Additionally, what do fair housing laws require of public officials? To avoid discrimination in municipal housing programs, avoid discrimination in the implementation of federal and state housing, avoid discrimination in land use regulation and practices, and that you must affirmatively further fair housing. So fair housing law began with those challenges to the constitutionality of racial discrimination in housing. That was started, again, the, the federal acts and the federal funds were one piece of it, but then Supreme Court cases also dictated the rest of it. So Buchanan versus, versus Worley in 1917, probably, um, one of the most pivotal cases, uh, that I can talk about tonight was the Supreme Court's, uh, decision that made ordinances that enforced the denial of housing to minority groups in white-zoned areas unconstitutional and illegal. Um, that, that essentially was a pivotal moment in time and led to, um, sort of the end of what was sort of racially-based zoning. Um, by 1948, Shelley versus Kramer also, um, had the enforcement of racially restrictive covenants as unconstitutional and illegal. But, um, in Massachusetts, it took a little bit more time before we actually began to outlaw racial discrimination in housing. It wasn't until 1957. And, uh, back to the Supreme Court, Jones versus Mayer. That was when the Supreme Court upheld federal law bars on all racial discrimination in pro- private or public housing in the sale of rental or rental of that type of property. Um, additionally, the Village of Arlington Heights versus Metropolitan Housing Development Corps. That in 1977 was when there was proof of a racially discriminatory intent had to be required in any claim that race was a motivating factor in a land zoning decision. So various points in time, um, land use-based decisions have been challenged by the court. And that includes in New Jersey, some of you might be familiar with hearing about Mount Laurel. Um, this was, there were two parts to Mount Laurel. Um, Mount Laurel I and Mount Laurel II, one in 1975 and the second one in 83. This was the New Jersey Supreme Court stating that municipal land use regulations that prevent affordable housing opportunities for the poor are unconstitutional. And they created what was called the Mount Laurel Doctrine, where New Jersey municipalities have to plan, zone for, and take affirmative actions to provide realistic opportunities to provide their quote-unquote "fair" share of regional need for low and moderate income housing. So somewhat similar in Massachusetts is what we call Mass General Law, Chapter 40B, and I'll talk about that a little bit later. Um, also, another state, uh, decision that was important here is from 2015, the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs versus the Inclusive Communities Project, where claims of racial discrimination in housing cases should not be limited by questions of intent. And that meant that the court upheld the application of disparate impact under the Fair Housing Act. And that disparate impact is, um, an important legal theory in which liability based upon a finding of discrimination may be incurred even when the discrimination was not intentional. So it's a pretty, another pretty important decision here. And then, um, in 2017, another, uh, I think very interesting case between the Bank of America, um, and the City of Miami allowed that city, um, and the Supreme Court decided that cities can indeed sue banks over Fair Housing Act violations if they target minorities. And a little bit more about that one, meaning that discrimination and lending by banks, in this case, um, in Miami, it, it led to high-interest loans that were given to people with good credit. And City of Miami decided to file suit to recover the taxes that it actually would have received if houses hadn't gone into foreclosure. And the Supreme Court said the case could proceed under the Fair Housing Act if the city could demonstrate how it was harmed by the bank's actions. So, um, so there was a direct connection there. And that also kind of goes to in general how we assess the impact of the federal fair housing laws. Um, and the categories include a number of things. First one is that it's, it has a direct prohibition of housing discrimination under the 14th Amendment. The second one is prohibiting, prohibiting discrimination in any program that receives federal funds. The third is requiring action to remedy past discrimination in programs that receive federal funds. The Fair Housing Act, but the federal side prevents discrimination on these bases shown on the screen. And a couple more important, um, things to know about. The ADA or the Americans with Disabilities Act, Title II prevents discrimination based on disability in programs and activities provided or made available by public entities. And Title III prohibits discrimination based on disability for entities operating housing and community development programs. And that one's pretty important because, um, we'll talk about how CDBG funding and other federal, uh, community development programs are utilized in the city in a moment, but also the Violence Against Women Act. Um, this was something that's been extended on the congressional, um, calendar this year. And if it is extended, it will require the establishment of emergency transfer plans for facilitating the relocation of certain tenants who are victims of domestic violence, dating violence, sexual assault, or stalking. So a little bit about federal funding recipients, which is the city of Lowell. You can't discriminate based on race, color, national origin, disability, age, and further as a Community Development Act recipient, uh, national origin, sex, religion, and that includes your Community Development Block Grant Funds. Community Development Block Grant Funds are federal funds that the city receives directly from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. And those funds include programs that help with a wide range of community activities, um, including, uh, activities that primarily benefit, uh, people who make a low or moderate income, um, eliminate what the federal government characterizes as blight, um, and also address various community development needs as well as encourage fair housing. Additionally, um, there's other types of federal programs where you cannot discriminate, uh, based upon fair housing laws. That includes the Education Fund. Those recipients cannot discriminate based on sex. And certain buildings that have been constructed with federal funds may not discriminate based on disability. Um, HUD, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, those recipients also have to correct any historical discrimination. And this goes to the duty to affirmatively further for housing, meaning that any fund recipient must take meaningful actions to overcome the legacy of segregation, unequal treatment, and historic lack of access to opportunity in housing. And so this, this idea of meaningful action is going to keep on playing out here. And this, this affirment, this duty, if you will, um, this was part of the original Fair Housing Act, but was more completely defined in 2015 with the passage of the affirmatively furthering for housing rule, which is now, um, underway today as well. It was briefly retracted under the prior administration and is now back in effect. And what this is saying is that HUD funding recipients must correct those historical discrimination act, discriminatory actions. And that means that any of its, any grantee must comply and have a compliant, um, affirmatively furthering for housing, any sort of action plan or analysis of impediments to fair housing. Um, there's other types of, these types of documents, but they all have to address, um, historic harms and undo, undo any burden to communities who have typically been harmed by housing practices of the past. And those include, the reason this is relevant to the planning board is because zoning is a big barrier to housing choice, um, and is viewed by the federal government and of course, our state government as being one of the, one of the major barriers to housing choice in our Commonwealth. Um, and so that duty to comply means that municipalities are responsible for reporting, um, and need to certify, uh, affirmatively furthering fair housing plans with any local required plans. And also, um, resources are available, of course, to municipalities in order to deal with these fair housing planning types of issues. Um, in fact, HUD issued multiple tools back in 2015, um, to help conduct assessments, um, and assist with any sort of technical affirmatively furthering for housing process, where you identify actions about what you need to do, um, to undo the burdens of the past. So I'm going to pause here because I'm entering into another section of this, uh, program in a moment. So let me just pause to see if there are any questions. Are there any questions? Um, Allison? No? Okay. Caleb?
Uh, I do have one. So, uh, I know, how, does the HUD provide an objective way of looking at, you know, uh, any threshold or indicators? I mean, and, uh, for those, those action plans that whether they're adequate or not, if, if or if not, how do they, how can they tell?
That's a really great question. Um, these are data-driven, informed plans that are not just data on demographics and where people live, how much income they make, what's their race, um, you know, any, any sort of number of factors to that extent. But it's also data that's based upon how people are, how people interplay with the private housing market and the public housing market. Um, and so there's a lot of information about discriminatory, discrimination in housing, um, as in people who've experienced discrimination as a result of whatever has happened in Lowell. There are, you know, practices of private property owners likely in Lowell, but potentially public, public property owners as well. Um, and so there's a lot of data that is collected and assessed. Also, the, the other types of analysis that's involved in a fair housing plan is about your zoning, um, and about land use regulations and how that may contribute to patterns that are potentially informing discriminatory, um, land use or discriminatory, uh, patterns. Um, of patterns of segregation or any historic segregation or historic places where there's large concentrations of poverty, for example. Um, those are all the types of things that are assessed in these fair housing plans. And then essentially the actions, I would say, are, are very, very much objective and driven by a community's willingness to address, you know, each one of the issues that might be identified one by one. Um, and that could be, you know, if you have a lot of, just for example, if you had a lot of, um, uh, in the private market, issues of discrimination that have been either unresolved or perhaps, um, even if they were resolved, they still are remarkable enough that the city would want to take some sort of action about that. This might mean that there could be, you know, some educational programs, um, issuances of, uh, compliance orders to property owners, you know, especially if there's some repeat, um, folks who are, uh, routinely, um, engaging in, in activities that would not, um, would be potentially in violation of the Fair Housing Act. Um, and that could be just on the private side. On the public side, you may identify that there are some historic patterns and, and also practices. Practices being how you permit and how you review and eventually permit new housing. Um, how you amend your zoning ordinance, um, in the city. What, what steps do you typically take? How long does it take? Um, and maybe you make changes based upon those findings. Um, or not. Those are, those are just a couple of examples of, you know, based upon what you find, you might make some changes to adjust, to improve the outcomes. And improving the outcomes would be based on best practices and evidence from other places where when you do make the kinds of changes that I just gave as examples, um, whether there's further education for people in the private, um, ownership market or, um, rental housing market like landlords, or if there's changes to your zoning laws that are more encouraging for the development or creation of different types of housing. Um, these are the kinds of things that do, there's evidence that they work in other places. Um, so that would be what it would be informed by.
Oh, thank you.
Jenny, if I could just add, I mean, I, I was looking at the city of Lowell, it has the analysis of impediments to fear housing choices. This was from 2011. And that actually, uh, looked at, uh, progress or, or not lack of progress from the prior report from 2006. So it's, it's, and it's a lot of the elements you just, uh, talked about. Uh, it's, it's a good read. I'll, I'll share that with the other members as well, but it's,
That's great. Yeah. The city, the city certainly has a lot of the documents that I'm, that we're talking about right now. They may however be, um, in need of an update or, you know, more reflective of current times. Usually if it's greater than five years old or there's new census data available, I would say that's a very good time to, um, provide an updated course of action. Um, additionally, we are coming out of a pandemic, um, or on some, in some place related to, to that. And things have changed in our housing market here in Greater Lowell. Um, there's other things that we might want to look at and assess. We are doing, um, NIMCOG is currently working on the housing production plan for the city. You're also undertaking a citywide comprehensive plan through Lowell Forward. And all of those things are really good, really good mile markers for looking at how you're affirmatively furthering for housing choice. Do you have any other questions? Okay. And I'm not seeing anybody else asking questions, so I'm gonna, I am going to keep moving. Alright, so Massachusetts. As I said, we are a little bit more proactive about, um, protecting people in the Commonwealth. Thankfully, that's a really good place to live. We care about people who live here. We care about people who don't live here yet. Um, because we believe that equality under the law shall not be denied or abridged because of number of bases: sex, race, color, creed, national origin. And housing discrimination is simply not allowed. It's not allowed. Uh, there's not any discrimination also allowed in public accommodations or, uh, based on disability through zoning. And that's, uh, that's specific to Massachusetts General Law under the Zoning Act, Chapter 40A, um, which guides hopefully all of your work on this board. Um, and under Section 3, uh, known as the Dover Amendment, there is no discrimination based on disability through, uh, through zoning. So, um, as well as religion, um, under the Dover Amendment and, uh, educational facilities. So it is unlawful to more expansively just not, you may not discriminate based on a number of different bases. When you pull it all together, the federal and the, and the state, uh, rules on fair housing. All of the bases on the screen, plus all of these bases. So, uh, genetic information, ancestry, marital status, veteran or active military status, disability, familial status, meaning people with children, um, and source of income, or if you're receiving housing assistance. So Massachusetts goes well beyond, um, what many other So Massachusetts goes well beyond what many other states do in terms of protecting people from discrimination. And Article 106, what I want you to know about that is it was adopted in 1976 and nulling Article 1 of the Massachusetts Declaration of Rights and substituted the following language, that all people are born free and equal and have certain natural, essential, and unalienable rights, among which may be reckoned the right of enjoying and defending their lives and liberties, that of acquiring, possessing, or protecting property in fine, that of seeking and obtaining their safety and happiness, equality under the law shall not be denied or abridged because of sex, race, color, creed, or national origin. So pretty, pretty inclusive place that we live in. And regulation and enforcement of fair housing laws in Massachusetts, a little bit different. You might have wondered, well, how, how does anything get enforced? What happens when somebody might be complaining even? And there's a couple of ways in which this works. The first one is the state level agency called the Massachusetts Commission Against Discrimination, kind of known as MCAD. It's the agency that is in charge of investigating discrimination. And MCAD creates regulations and the Massachusetts Attorney General's Civil, Civil Rights Division prosecutes the litigation. So there's a variety of ways in which this comes to be, where these are things like identifying unlawful housing practices, generally speaking, meaning prohibiting discrimination in the leasing or renting of accommodations to persons with children, requiring reasonable accommodations in the rental or sale of housing to persons with a physical or mental disability, and prohibition of discrimination in the furnishing of credit services and granting of mortgage loans. So there's a lot of, a lot that the Commonwealth tries to do under its own federal, its own fair housing laws, rather. Additionally, I wanted to mention, as I did a little bit earlier when we were talking about Mount Laurel in New Jersey, Massachusetts has one, like New Jersey, there's about four or five other states who similarly have a state law about fair share. And 40B is our version of that in the Commonwealth. It's Mass. General Law, Chapter 40B. There's two, two parts to 40B. One of them is actually about affordable housing and anti-snob zoning is what it's called affectionately. And the second part is actually what helped to create the agency that I currently run, which is the regional planning component of 40B. And they're somewhat intertwined because they're both addressing regional planning. It's, it's a regional planning law. 1969, the legislature added these sections to address regional housing disparities. So the agency I run is from, you know, born in 1963. And years later, the legislature added to not just regional planning around transportation, but saw that there was an important connection to housing as well in 1969. And the law makes it clear that it is assuming that communities have met an obligation. And that obligation is kind of like a fair share. At least 10% of their year-round housing inventory has to be included on what's called the state's subsidized housing inventory. And that means that homes that are listed on this inventory are deed restricted and designated affordable, and they're rented or sold at an affordable price based upon a metropolitan area that, where that unit is located and to people with specific, who make specific incomes, and that there's affirmative marketing of that unit so that it is available to anybody who wishes to apply, to have access to that opportunity. The subsidized housing inventory is an inventory that is managed and administered by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, formerly known as the Department of Housing and Community Development. 40B has been upheld in, for example, the Board of Appeals of Hanover versus the Housing Appeals Committee in 1972 to 73. And following a failed statewide ballot initiative to repeal the law in 2010, it was upheld. And that includes actually people in Lowell voting to keep that law. So it's, it's a law that has, you know, a really important role in our Commonwealth in ensuring that fair housing and affordable housing is achieved, and particularly in municipalities that have a lack of housing available. So, back to how we investigate housing discrimination. So many municipalities have already created a local human rights commission. And those human rights commissions are tasked with the ability to receive reports of housing discrimination. And usually it stops there. They notify MCAD, that Commission Against Discrimination. Most commissions don't have the independent power to assess any fines for discrimination or even investigate. They may assure compliance with existing state law. They might hold an investigative hearing. They may ask a court for the authority to subpoena witnesses. And they have to report their findings typically to MCAD or the AG's office. Boston and Cambridge are two commissions with higher level capabilities based on home rule and design of those two specific respective commissions. They can investigate subpoena witnesses and they can make determinations if probable cause exists. The Boston Human Rights Commission can also impose civil penalties and go to court to, on its own behalf to stop discrimination. So those are higher level powers that most communities don't necessarily have. So what exactly is the municipal responsibility to avoid any types of discrimination? What do you do? And there's a picture of people at a meeting here, so you probably know where I'm going with this. So, what do you, what do you do when you're in a meeting and people are discussing a housing policy or regulatory change? Well, please know that it is unlawful to talk about keeping people out who have a disability, who have children, by talking about like impacts on schools, have an income limitation, for example, people who require housing assistance. So as I mentioned, in Massachusetts, we have higher levels of rules that apply. So it's not just the Federal Fair Housing Act. We have rules about not being, you cannot discriminate against families who have children. You can't discriminate against people who have a disability. You may not discriminate against people who, based upon their income or their source of income, more specifically. And if the result of a policy is discrimination against a protected group of individuals, then a case can be brought forward under the Federal Fair Housing Act as well as the state federal, the state fair housing laws. The policy or policies must cause that disparate impact that we were talking about a little bit earlier. A violation of any Massachusetts law would be found, it will also be found where a policy results in discrimination against a protected group of individuals. And again, the policy or policies must cause that disparate impact. So some tips about avoiding discrimination in providing affordable housing information. So avoiding that discrimination means any of those affordable housing programs that are overseen by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, or EOHLC. Municipalities can have, of course, your own affordable housing programs, but information must be accessible to those people with disabilities or those also with limited English proficiency. Second tip, caution people who participate in your meetings, including board members, in discussions about affordable housing to avoid discrimination. So under 40B, you are, you may allow the construction of higher density housing. Proposals could be contentious and discretion that are discriminatory in nature, they can occur. And additionally, the permit conditions or any discussion informing the conditions of a permit may not be discriminant, just may not have any discrimination or discriminatory intent. So there's really, it's really important to understand that in a, in your community's commitment to fair housing, you do a lot of different things, not just have an assessment of fair housing or an analysis of impediments to fair housing choice, or even a fair housing declaration, or setting annual goals to affirmatively further for housing. Those are really important things, but you need to do a little bit more. You need to also make sure that your zoning and your housing authorities and others are also compliant. So tip three, housing authorities also have to exercise some caution here. Meaning they can't discriminate against their applicants or tenants. Some housing authority property may actually be considered a public forum, so assembly and speech are protected. And zoning regulations can be unlawful if there is a discriminatory impact. That means that zoning regulations that prevent families with children or low-income residents can be deemed unlawful. And municipalities have attempted to limit the use of property for things like drug addiction, rehabilitation, but recovering addicts have a protected disability. So again, you need to be aware of, when you're thinking about or looking at residential opportunities or specifically housing, where you're not in any sort of getting into some sort of, something unlawful if there is something that is deemed to have a discriminatory impact. One more thing I want to say here, but I'm losing my spot. One second. My apologies. So zoning ordinances and bylaws, they can't contain provisions that treat uses like, for example, affordable housing, supportive housing or group homes for people with disabilities any differently than any similar uses. And municipalities may not enforce ordinances more strictly against housing occupied by members of protected classes. Similarly, a municipality may not make zoning or land use decisions based on neighbors' fears that members of protected classes would occupy a dwelling. Land use policies such as, for example, density or design requirements that make residential development prohibitively expensive, or prohibitions on multifamily housing in general, or a ceiling of four or fewer unrelated adults in a household, how you define family, how you say that only certain people can live in certain types of housing units potentially, those may all be considered discriminatory if it can be proven that these policies have a disproportionate impact on minorities, families with children, or people with disabilities. Another way that I was talking about that discrimination in zoning and land use may occur is when what is considered a facially neutral ordinance has that disparate impact or causes disproportional harm to a protected group. And although you might think zoning and land use is an area where municipalities have primary power, courts have consistently held that the Fair Housing Act prohibits local governments from exercising their zoning and land use powers in any discriminatory way. And there have been many cases against problem land use laws from municipalities. And some of them, I can certainly answer questions about, but, for example, the Attorney General's Office has made rulings on a variety of adopted zoning laws in the past. And while the AG's office may not review the city of Lowell zoning, again, a case could be brought forth, this is where you have to be mindful of, a case could be brought forth if something can be proven that there was discriminatory intent or impact. So avoiding discrimination through land use controls. An example of this, a case that happened in, zooming out, leaving Massachusetts for a moment, we're getting on a plane, we're flying to New Orleans, it's going to be great, I'm sure. And looking at a case that happened in 2009. This decision was actually following Hurricane Katrina and was brought forward by the Greater New Orleans Fair Housing Action Center against the St. Bernard Parish, where after Hurricane Katrina, the St. Bernard Parish, which is outside of the city of New Orleans, passed a law that limited rentals to family members unless a permit was obtained. And they also passed a moratorium on any multifamily housing. The federal court analyzed the moratorium and the law and found that a variety of terminology and words were being used to describe why people wanted to pass the laws. Now, that means that they read documents about hearings, they read information about what people said on the record, and it could have been board members. It could also have been members of the public. And those words that were used to describe why people wanted the city, or the St. Bernard Parish, rather, to adopt these rules. And the court determined that these justifications were like references to certain types of people that the court had previously found to be camouflaged racial expressions. And the court determined that based on the impact to the protected group and the discussion about fears relating to who might move into the community and that motivation behind the ruling, that the moratorium and the law combined were unlawful and they invalidated them. Other relevant court cases that I want to put into your mind include the zoning board of appeals versus the Housing Appeals Committee in 2010, where this demonstrated that you can't put certain conditions or preferences in your permit decisions that are further restricting and limiting and potentially causing discrimination or discriminatory intent. The Southern Middle Sex Opportunities Council, known as SMOCK, actually a group that is, is engaged with the city of Lowell, but in a different way. They are active in the town of Framingham. The town went through a period with the, with that particular organization trying to do a development in Framingham. And at the time, they were, they're a city now, but they were the town in 2020 when this was decided. And that the permitting delays that existed were actually problematic because there were Dover uses involved. Additionally, in 2016, in California, another example, Avenue 60 Investments versus Yuma, California, where the city had made claims about the types of people who might live in the higher density zone and the impact to the neighborhoods surrounding that area. And ultimately Avenue 60 Investments was able to move forward and the ruling allowed for them to rezone for higher density. So taking meaningful action, that's really your next step. It's the way that you avoid not just, you know, discrimination, but also move above and beyond just your duty and obligation to combat discrimination, overcome, overcome patterns of segregation and foster inclusive communities that are free from barriers that restrict access to opportunity based on protected characteristics. That is what the city of Lowell must do because you are a federal fund recipient. And that means meaningful action is addressing the housing needs that you have in the city, replacing segregated living patterns with integrated and balanced living patterns, ensuring access to opportunity. So, in summary, Massachusetts and federal laws, they, they're designed to prohibit discrimination. Municipalities can establish local commissions to investigate and report discrimination through a human rights commission. That can be further amplified if you have the legal capability to make it into a bigger enforcer and decider. And municipalities that receive HUD funds are obligated to further the purpose. Municipalities must avoid discrimination when creating housing policy, implementing, implementing housing programs or creating housing opportunities. Land use regulations cannot be intentionally discriminatory or have a discriminatory impact. And municipalities must take meaningful actions to affirmatively further for housing. So for more information, I'm going to send to you the workshop supplement, which is the same topic of fair housing laws and be happy to answer any questions. Also, I've got some additional information in my slide deck where you can go for additional information about fair housing, the history of fair housing, different policy guides that help to, help you to understand more about the types of actions that the city might take in order to affirmatively further for housing, an article that I wrote about zoning's racist legacy. And that's all. I'm going to stop sharing so we can see each other. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Got a quick question for you. So in one of the earlier slides, you were, you were talking about how in a public meeting, how people can't say anything about kind of like not them or whatever. And you said with any disability, including, you know, any addiction, et cetera. And so are you talking about citizens, you know, in the neighborhood that come to speak publicly? So in, in the case of that, and if someone starts doing that, what is our role in that? Do we have to let people finish or do we say, interrupt and explain why? What, how, how do we handle that?
That's a really good question. And it, it, that was, that was the example that was provided. And it, and I guess part of your question is, are we talking about people who come to meetings? And yes, we're talking about people who come to meetings, but we're also talking about board members. I'm not calling out a specific board member here. I'm just saying in general, like, board members have to be aware of how you're talking about an application when you're discussing it and deliberating. Or in general, particularly though during a public hearing is what I was referencing. My suggestion would be that how you handle it is at the start of a meeting, that the chair outlines the rules and what you will abide by and that you may not make decision, any sort of decision and that your decision-making cannot involve anything that is in violation. And that your decision-making cannot involve anything that is in violation of fair housing. And that includes, and you might provide a list of things to educate members of the public. And then I would say that because you've done that at the beginning of a meeting, you have the opportunity. They're frankly being interruptive and in violation of laws. Um, that is a good time to remind people of that original rule and why you're enforcing that rule. It's not restricting their speech. You may. Are obligated to do so in Massachusetts now. We, we have that fairness as part of all of our meetings. You can limit the time people speak, but you, but you can't limit their words and what they want to say. But you can say, you're not going to use words or claims that may be in violation with the Fair Housing Act and Fair Housing Laws of Massachusetts. Um, and those include, you know, where um all the things that I've already talked about. Um, and that may need, may not be part of your deliberations or any decision making or special conditions or anything further.
Great, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Any, um, if there are not any questions from the board, I'm happy to take. Questions from attendees who I think have the ability to type a question in the Q and A. So I'll just go in once, going twice. Third time. And if there's nothing, then I will give you back the rest of your night. And I'll see if Katie has anything else that needs to be done for the evening.
Nothing at all, just to thank you so much. So useful, always.
You're welcome. And I will, um, I'll send my slide deck and the supplement materials to Fran. Um, and she will make sure that it is distributed um to the full board. And thank you, Deb, for that point. I'm glad there's none. As I mentioned before, you know where to reach me. Hopefully I'm at NIMCOG. Um, feel free to reach out anytime. I'm glad to follow up. And I'm glad to come back again if you want to talk again about this topic or anything else. So thank you again for, for this opportunity. Hope you have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.